All right, I call to order the Council Infrastructure Committee meeting of August 17th, 2017. And we have two items on the agenda tonight. And we'll start with the first one, which is AB 7250, Transportation Benefit District. So I'd like to kind of just cap this a little bit with a little introduction. It was here at our previous meeting. And it is the only major decision item on this agenda. We have updates as a second agenda item, but it's the big one. So one of the things we're doing here, I'd like to get done is make sure we get this cleared from committee and whatever we're doing, we want to send it to council. So we have tonight to do whatever we need to do to get this ready to go to council. So one of the reasons why it's light. So with that in mind, Jennifer, you have a little bit of presentation or not? Okay, then go ahead.
And then some reviewing any answers and then any try to answer any follow-up questions that you might have. So I'm going to go through those questions and then if we can make sure that enough information was provided. First question was, how might the private sector contribute to a TBD? Essentially, anyone who pays sales tax is going to be contributing to a TBD. So it might be a business-to-business transaction that is a taxable event. So a business may pay the sales tax, or it may be a private consumer who is making a purchase that is a taxable event, and so they would pay a sales tax. So anyone hopping in or making a taxable purchase in the city of Issaquah would be paying that 2/10ths of 1% sales tax if that were to be added to our local sales tax.
And so no exceptions? Exceptions or exceptions?
If someone is exempt, if they receive an exemption from the state, that is, and that is regulated through the Department of Revenue, if they are exempt from paying sales tax, then they would not be paying sales tax.
Includes all City of Issaquah transactions?
Anything, anyone who's exempt, yes.
Wait. I mean, so all of our business, any transactions we do, any invoices we pay that have sales tax on it, those all would pay that if the TBD is created with the sales tax?
That's correct.
Okay.
Next question was regarding a potential for offering up a rebate program and how we might establish that program and what criteria would be applicable to that. And then, of course, all centered around a rebate program that was equitable and fair. And so according to state law, we would not be eligible to offer up a rebate program because that is prescribed by state law. So there's not a lot of opportunity for us to change that. Criteria is set by the state. So nonetheless, that's not an option for the city of Issaquah to establish a rebate program. Now, I do want to mention, though, that anyone currently now and through the Department of Revenue seek out a sales tax rebate. And that's on any type of sales tax that they've paid. If they feel that they're entitled to a rebate, that's all regulated through the Department of Revenue, so that is not something that the city of Issaquah can. Next question was about tolling. And with regards to this being a potential funding source for a transportation benefit district, there is not a community in the state of Washington who has utilized tolling as a means to fund their transportation benefit district. It is allowed. There would certainly be some additional scrutiny that we would want to, we would want to look at, certainly with our bond counsel, making sure that we are following state law with regards to where we could use those revenues. There are some potentials for, can we use those revenues anywhere in the TBD if it was established? Or do we have to use it specifically on the road that has, that would have the toll? So there are a number of, it depends, and not necessarily overly clear about whether or not we could use it in one place versus the other. Are we going?
A question on that one, Jen. I'm assuming the geographic boundary right now of our transportation benefit district is just the city limits?
That is what is, it would be proposed. And that's all essentially that the city of Issaquah could establish is our corporate limits. Now, if we were to entertain a potential regional TBD, then that would be a defined district, but then there's also the other entities that would be involved in the decision-making with regards to projects, how it's funded, things of that nature.
So.
Have they voted in?
Exactly, yeah.
So if you did not, if you decided you had a traffic capture zone that was a part of the county or whatever, would those in voting for the TBD, would it just be those who reside in that part of the county if you just tried to expand the TBD?
It would be. So whoever is located within the identified district boundaries, those would be the persons, the voters who would be.
Would vote.
You know, deciding the ballot measure.
Okay. And then maybe a question for Sheldon, too. So there was talk in southeast King County, Maple Valley, Kent Covington, and everybody wanting to form a boundary. The boundary that they're talking about did not come into the city of Issaquah?
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
So what they're proposing in southeast King County, it would be, it's the same thing, but it would be a multi-jurisdictional thing because it'd be King County as well as some other municipalities, and they would have to form that and join in and do all that same work.
Yep.
But like I say, their proposal at this time.
Did not through us.
Came right up to our boundary.
Yep.
Don't know how much further that's gone than the proposal stage either, so I haven't heard anymore.
Me either. Anything further on the tolling question?
One more question. On tolling. So is there a definition of what any impact on a state facility means?
You'd have to look into that further. If we were going to pursue the tolling, we would want to have our legal counsel provide an opinion on what that means. A deeper dive into that, we would have to. All right, the next question then was about excluding fixed income individuals or deferring the tax or toll or fee. And so essentially, the, this is revert back to the state statute in regards to, we would not be able to offer up that rebate program, and we would not be able to treat anyone differently from another in regards to a deferment or a discount or rebate. Next question then would be, could the TBD be used to fund bus service on SR 900? And that is a possibility. Based on the definition in the state statutes is that we could essentially utilize the TBD resources to, and I'll quote the statute, "may include the operation, preservation, and maintenance of facilities and programs." Again, this is, if this was a method or a use of the TBD resources, we would be having legal counsel specifically address what that means and how we could, we could use it to be crystal clear.
Okay. Question on the busing one? So SR 900, is it limited to bus service on SR 900 within the taxing jurisdiction? Or is it busing that goes beyond the taxing jurisdiction?
A good question. And that's one of those very, very pointed questions about where we could use that. It would, it would be, you know, the, essentially, what I would interpret is that it would be our busing operations that were within the city.
Yeah.
Where we would use those dollars to expand, improve, whatnot. But we would, we would again need legal counsel to provide the guidance on exactly what we would use it for, for busing operations.
Okay.
And how far outside of the city that would go.
Right, because you would assume that there's some sort of benefit that those at the other end of that bus line are getting yet not paying into the taxing that's paying for the busing.
That could be the case, yes.
I remember, I don't think I asked this question. Do you, who asked the question and what was the thinking and the scope of this?
Wasn't me.
Yeah, it wasn't me.
Wasn't me. I don't remember who asked this.
Was it?
I don't know. This was from work session, too, so it might have been somebody from us.
Oh, yeah. Could be a work session question.
Could be.
Because what's might be implied in there, I mean, SR 900, part of it's inside the city.
But not much.
Obviously, a lot of it isn't as well. And then maybe the implication that this somehow links Renton with Issaquah. Well, State Route 900. So, yeah, so this would be, and is there any, I don't know, so I don't know exactly, I can only guess at the purpose of the question, but based upon what I've seen already, that's a state road. Do we know that if it's actually transit service, who I would assume it would be King County Metro? So I would think that King County, King County may or may not have to be party to the TBD. The state may or may not have to be party to TBD because we're not improving their infrastructure, it's just a service on their route. I don't, so that would be, how are we going to handle the additional questions you're just saying?
If there, if we want to dive deeper into bringing bond counsel or legal counsel to specifically give guidance on these, the methods or the uses of, or where we identify the projects that are, that are, we put in the TBD, that would be my recommendation for next step is to have specific legal counsel.
Okay, thank you. Bill, question for you. Is anything on 900 in the long-range plan for Metro?
Yes. They do, their plan is to have buses up and down 900 from Renton to Issaquah. That is in the plan.
Do you know the, their horizon?
That's one of the pieces that'll go in, it depends, I mean, that's the additional service. So at this point in time, there's a bunch of those new additional routes that go in. Which ones are going first and which ones will go second and third? I couldn't answer that yet. But I'd say probably not within the next three to five years. I'm just, but that's a wild.
It is on, it is on their long-range plan.
It is on their plan.
All right, thank you.
Their short, long-range plan. I mean, it's, you know, they're not looking just 20 years out, and hopefully that would be much sooner than that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
And just as another mention on how Metro works is, they, they are very willing to sell service to communities. So if they don't have a service and you want something and you can say, hey, we'll, you know, fund it, they'll, they'll provide it. So they work that way as well, and that's how some extra service gets done. That's what's, actually what's happening in Seattle right now, right? They voted to fund the additional service that was being withdrawn when they had to cut back, and so Seattle City voted to restore that, and they, and they are basically contracting with Metro to do that. Now, that, that funding's going to run out at some point here fairly soon, I think, and they're going to have to make a decision with Metro and see who, how, what they're going to do at that point. But they've continued their service because they've paid for it. So I guess just, here's a clarif, question is, I want to get to an end on this. So if we have a question that we're absolutely stuck on that we need to answer before we go forward, I want to, you know, acknowledge that. These are questions, I don't know if they're going to hold us up, so, but this one is one, it's a jurisdictional question, and it is a little tricky, and it might, let's say, a legal thing. I don't, I don't know if the toll question is tricky or not that you had a question on. But so I'm going to keep this in back of mind, always get through it and say, well, any of these questions we don't have answers to now, was that going to stop us from doing anything tonight? That'll be when we get through this at the end, okay? Thank you.
All right. Next question was centered around all of the possible funding sources. Sheldon, could you move to the table, please? It was an attachment to this memo.
Should be further down.
It's on page.
It was separate.
View table.
That's it.
That's it.
It's the debt table. There's another column for uses after that, after paid by.
Pay, yeah.
Yeah.
Close over the little sidebar thing.
You have a scroll bar at the bottom, too?
You're not going to get it all.
This table was prepared as a way to put all of the alternative revenue sources options in a place where they could be easily compared from one to the other. You recall at the council's retreat, in the fiscal forecasting book, these potential sources of revenue were identified, there was some summary information about those. So this is, this is essentially the dollar amounts and the criteria or the columns to identify if voter approvals needed, estimated the rate or percent. And what was provided here is the fund that would be used to track the source, the type of revenue, who it would be paid by, and then the uses. What I wanted to do is essentially walk through some potential revenue sources that the council may consider for funding transportation projects. The information up top is for, just for your benefit to understand where we are currently with regards to assessed valuation, because rates are calculated based on assessed valuation, they're calculated based on the regular levy, excess levy, and then showing there the 2017 tax rate and excess tax rate. So one alternative revenue source is bank capacity. And so this is an amount that doesn't require voter approval because it's tax, it's levy amounts that were not taken in the past. So essentially, the council could opt to say, we're going to utilize our bank capacity, and it is a value of a little over $200,000. The estimated rate, it's very minimal, but if you, I calculated it based on 2017 assessed valuation and what would be a potential change in the regular rate, because it would change the regular levy, about $200,000. The general fund is where those sources would come into. It is a property tax. It's paid by the property owners, and the revenues are essentially unassigned or determined through the budget process of where they're going to be expended. Another revenue source.
Question. You said it's levy amounts not taken in the past. I'm not sure I completely understand. So we're not talking about part of the excess tax, it's not something that was voted in and not taken?
That's correct. It is, if the council chose in the past not to increase the levy, the 1% or increase the levy in amount, so essentially what that does is that kind of puts it into a banked situation. It's not a pool of cash sitting anywhere. It's just a value that at any time, if you choose to, in the future, utilize that, where you've banked that capacity to levy, you would then, you would then authorize that levy amount in addition to perhaps a 1% increase. So it was a past non-increase in a levy when you were setting that through the budget process.
I believe if you look back over the last 10 years, probably half of them or more, we did not take the 1%. What does this represent? One year or all potential years? What's the time horizon?
I do not have that exact number of years that it was. I know the, I know the dollar amount just because I have the information from, from the total, the highest lawful levy allowed. So the actual amounts and in what year that information, I can provide that. I don't have that at this time.
Okay. So there, for every year, that, I think, is up to 1%, right? It's up to 1%.
That is the levy limitation, yes.
And so you can compute what that amount is, that 1%. And, and so that's what's banked, is that amount only, not a rate, this is, or anything like that. So that is showing, it says 0.02%.
That is an estimated. The value we know. Bank capacity value we know because it's calculated off of, because the city has a.
It's just an amount.
It's an amount.
Every year that, that was no increase in the property tax rate of up to that 1%. There's an amount for each of those years.
Correct. So it builds. So if you think, just to do some quick math, you think that our 1% levy increase is a little over $80,000. So if you think, you know, a couple of years of $80,000, that's 160, but this is from past valuations. So, you know, it could be four years or it could be three years, depending on what the value was at that time when there was no increase in the levy adopted.
And so is that an amount, it does say annual, so we have, so you have to compute some rate increase that would equate to, based upon assessed valuation of the city, that would get us that amount. And so then, so that now becomes just part of the tax rate going forward.
Yes. Once you, once you decide and levy up to, you levy your bank capacity amount, then that, essentially, the 2017 tax rate is 0.94 per thousand. So this would, this wouldn't even move the needle on the 0.94 because it, you know, it's not an additional penny even for $200,000 on our, based on our current assessed valuation for the city.
So I'll ask one to clarify. So this, last year, we took that $80,000, right? And the discussion I remember was, I thought once, if we didn't take it, then I thought we kind of lost it. But you're saying it just stays there, and at some point in time, we can go back and get that, to that 1% that we could have taken.
Essentially, if you hadn't increased 1% last year in the 2000 levy, that $80,000 would have gone on to the $200,000, so I would have been showing you a value of $280,000 in your bank capacity as, as potential.
Thank you. So on clarification on this one, I would like to know how far back this goes.
Okay.
I think we got that one pretty well. Thank you.
Another alternative revenue source is an excess levy. That would be a defined amount for a particular project. It would need voter approval. The rate or the percent or what that impact is, it would, is to be determined. And the fund that an excess levy is likely to go in, it, it's possible it would go into the general fund, but essentially, an excess levy is typically based on issuing debt. And so the debt fund is where that revenue source would go into, because the debt service payment would be paid out of the debt service fund. It is essentially a property tax. Property owners would pay that tax, and the uses would be defined by council or through the debt service obligation or essentially the bond that would be driving the need for an excess levy. Any questions on that?
That's essentially what we tried to pass this last year.
Exactly, yes. Another alternative revenue source is a levy lid. This is similar with regards to an excess levy. Voter approval is required. The estimated rate, the capacity or the cap is 20 cents per thousand, and this is a property tax paid by property owners and again, defined by a specific project, is defined by council, and often, again, a debt service obligation.
Question. Lid, local improvement district? I didn't think so.
This is a levy lid, so you're essentially lifting the lid off of your levy amount for a period of time.
For a specific project?
Yes.
Doesn't have to be a specific?
I mean, it could be, it could be one project, it could be multiple projects.
Okay.
But it's, there's no bond associated with this, so this is the, right? So that's the 50% in terms of voter approval requirement.
Well, there could be a bond connected to this for the, for the project. The lid amount could be to pay the debt service.
So for me, the difference between the excess levy and the levy lid is that the levy lid has a cap, and excess levy would be a specified amount.
Yes.
So if one more, if you want to go up to that cap of 1.8 million or 2%, you could use either, to go above that, you'd have to use the excess levy.
Yes.
Okay.
So in the first three, Jen, all paid by the property owners, which ones can be done just with council authorization and which ones could be done with council authorization and/or a vote? So bank capacity, is that just something the council does without, during?
That's, that's through your levy authorization.
Yeah, so we just do that. The excess levy is like the bond that we did last year, and so that one definitely has a voter part to it.
Yes, it does.
And the levy lid, could or could not, may or may not?
It requires voter approval.
It requires voter approval. Okay. And then something that came up generally that we were talking about, and I know it's not available in our state, but something that I'm concerned about is that with the increasing affordability, lack of affordability in town, there is a lot of residents who are concerned about increasing property taxes. And I think we talked about it at leadership, but whether or not there is an ability under the state law for us to provide waivers on these kinds of increases to property taxes for those on fixed income, and whether or not that's something we've looked into.
Not a deep dive into it.
Okay.
So that, that might be a.
I just make that, I make that comment because for me, it'd be very hard to approve these property tax increases. If it's going, it just has such a dramatic impact on people on fixed income, so would like to know that. Not before we talk about whether or not we do the district.
Got it.
But whether or not we use one of these other tools.
Overcome that exemption, right?
Yeah. Transportation Benefit District is an alternative revenue source. There are, as you know from the presentation from our bond counsel, I've got two listed here in this table. Revenue type, essentially a sales tax, a 2/10ths of 1%. If that were to be the funding source, would bring in approximately 2.2 million. Voter approval is required. This would go into a special revenue fund. It's paid for by those who are making a retail tax purchase, and then the uses would be for, defined by the council through the capital budget, through the CIP, or if debt were issued, the TBD source would be, would be used to pay the debt service, principal and interest. So that essentially would be defined by the debt service obligation. The other type of funding source from the presentation was to impose a vehicle tab fee?
Okay.
So that, so that's been estimated at over $400,000. No voter approval is required for that. The persons who pay for that would be registered vehicle owners in the city of Issaquah. And again, that would be, to use those sources would be defined by a project, or if debt were to be issued, then again, those funding sources would be used to pay the principal and interest payment. That's the Transportation Benefit District.
So.
So with two funding options.
Questions on that? So as for sales tax, we're a retail strong city, meaning that we are a draw for people from other locations to come in. Do we know in our sales tax bucket, how much of the sales tax is actually generated from those that do not live within the city or work within the city?
No, we don't know, you know, we don't have who's paying that. I mean, you can have a purchase of, you know, the taxable sale is a $2 sale and there's a sales tax for that. So we don't know who's paying that. The differentiating between a private consumer or businesses paying that, we wouldn't have that level of detail.
The only reason I ask is that it has come up before with the city of Semamish, that the majority of their residents come to Issaquah to shop. And one of the questions that was put on the table before was that because Issaquah is a retail strong city, that we should be using part of our sales tax revenue to fix our roads. And I was just thinking that if Semamish were to do a Transportation Benefit District, their revenues from sales taxes would be minimal and ours are significant. And I'm just wondering if you had any idea of how much of our pot is divided between those that work and reside here and those that don't? It sounds like that's not easy information to get.
That is correct.
Okay.
Jen, one more question. And thank you, you're covering TBD again. I appreciate it. The, when you define a TBD, if you would want to use the funds regardless of if it's the sales tax or property tax, if you're going to use it for debt service, you have to specify it at that time?
Yes. You would want to because in state law, if you indicate that you're going to use it to pay debt service for a variety of projects, then that then allows for you to extend the TBD past 10 years. So there's some information from the Department of Revenue on local sales tax as a TBD funding source. And there's some criteria for, because a TBD can only, term of it is only 10 years, you can go longer if you have identified that you would use it to pay for debt service.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, debt service or project specific, when you do that, and I understood with the sales tax, but if, even with the $20 tab, which you can do without a vote, because there's a ton of cities that have that.
Yes.
They have to define where that money's going, you know, for with project and debt for those projects or whatever?
Yes, you'd want to define if you were going, because you could do a combination. You could do project specific and then you could, that it is, would be to pay for debt service. It really depends. You know, at the time when we would be putting together a ballot measure, we would want to essentially spell out what the uses would be for because that then helps us to determine how we administer the TBD.
When you say debt service obligation, we'd be hearing that not just any debt in general, it'd be specific.
Transportation-related debt service obligation.
Right, okay.
Something of that nature.
And we would do that with, you know, you'd have to do that with the vehicle tabs as well as sales tax. Because that's what you say on the thing there, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Good?
Good.
All right.
Okay, so Transportation Benefit District is, covered that source, we've got two. Another alternative revenue source is the potential for increasing the BNO taxes to what is, would be considered a maximum amount. This is a, it's a very kind of general, we don't get into the details because there are different BNO tax rates. But what I provided here was an estimated amount, the estimated kind of average increase in a rate to get us to that maximum. The BNO taxes come into the general fund, they are paid for by businesses and essentially it's unassigned unless the council through the budget process determines where the general fund provides resources to capital projects.
Question. Which category of BNO tax?
Well, this is just referring to all of them. So like I said, there are different categories. So if we wanted to dive into what is, what would, how would it impact those different categories, we'd want to bring back a very refined table that identifies the category, what the current rate is, what the new rate is, and then we could, we could provide specific dollar amount estimated increases in revenues from those categories of BNO tax. For this purpose, it was just a very high-level summary of what we would anticipate overall. So we'd definitely be adding in a lot more detail with regards to this new change in revenues in our BNO tax rate.
And you're just looking at 2, 1,000th kind of thing overall, just kind of thing, just to get a general number? Like you say, it could be very specific later on, but to get the number of 2 and 1/2 million, you just did a 2,000th.
Very, very general, high-level estimate of what we would anticipate based on our history.
Then a question on that? So when we looked at BNO rates a few years ago and did an increase, it sort of put us mid-range on what cities were doing. Do you know what that increase would do in terms of where our neighboring cities are?
I do not, I do not have that information right now.
That would be, I think, something we'd want to know if we're going to consider raising the funds that way.
And the BNO tax? Another potential alternative revenue source is to implement a utility tax on the city's municipal water, sewer, and stormwater revenues. And so if you recall in the fiscal forecasting book, the information that was provided was a range of percentages for a potential utility tax. What's been used here for an assumption on how much revenue a utility tax would generate is almost 1.2 million, it's a 1.178 based on our water, sewer, storm rate receipts. And so a 6% utility tax on those municipal utilities would be essentially received in the general fund. The revenue type, it's obviously a utility tax. Utility customers would pay that. And then of course, it's for uses, it's unassigned, but through the budget process, again, the council would determine where those resources would be spent.
So on the water, sewer, storm, between industry and business and residential users, do we know what percentage of the 1.2 million would come from each of those groups?
We would, that would be additional detail. If we were going to look specifically at this, we could pull, we could, we could come up with estimates based on commercial ratepayers and residential-
So we'd be able to see where the bulk of the money was coming from?
That's correct.
Okay. Not so concerned on the cable one. Well, maybe I am. Thanks.
Cable. So that's pretty straightforward again, is that we would increase to the max and assigned and based on council budget authorizations. I'm going to go back to the memo.
So before you move on. So thank you for putting this together. I think I asked for this. I just wanted to see all the various options we had laid out, how they compared. And of course, this is just for informational only, it's just for information only. One of the things, and you mentioned it last time we talked about this, and you have it up there again in the uses category. Unlike, unlike the bank capacity and the, and I realize BNO tax is just an example, you pulled a number. But then the utility tax and the, on whether, both of those also, you pulled numbers to come up with those. I mean, you picked numbers on your own. All of those are, represent a certain amount of capital, you know, per year that would be available. What the TBD offers alternatively is that actually could just be a debt service amount and the actual capital available to us could actually be quite greater. You can leverage that tool to get access to more capital to do something more significant sooner.
Correct. You've stated that well, and that is essentially the next question in the memo. That was how much would 2.2 million in debt service, debt service payment provide us? And so to be conservative, especially when I'm asked about, you know, how much in bonds could we issue, approximately $35 million in debt may be issued with that estimated $2.2 million annual, you know, we could use those resources to pay that debt service payment.
On that table, you don't have to pull it up, Sheldon. On that table that you had with those multiple possible revenue streams, only the Transportation Benefit District could be used for debt service. The other ones could not. That's sort of what I was hearing.
Well, the other ones, they all could be used-
They all could be used for debt service. So with every one, we can leverage, we can leverage capital.
The TBD is specifically for transportation.
Yes.
And again, in, when you would establish the district and essentially set it up, you would want to say, this is for debt service because that would impact your term of your TBD.
Yep. But we could do it with the other sources as well.
Yes, you could.
We would just have to take a few more steps to make sure that it was lever, used for transportation.
Yes, through your budget process, it would be, here's the revenue source that you would essentially set in the budget. And then, for example, then you would authorize a transfer out to a debt service fund to pay the debt service on a transportation debt obligation.
Okay, that makes sense.
So that was back up to the memo and the, I'm sorry.
Okay. So I got a question on 35 million.
Yes.
So in general, on TBD, you're talking 2.2 million a year for 10 years, which to me adds up to 22 million. Now, that may vary because you may have some inflation factors in there a little bit, but is that what's going from the 22 to 35 is, you know, additional revenues over that time rather than the 2.2? Or how else are you getting to 35 million from 22 million?
Well, 35 million is essentially the amount of a bond issue that we could issue and then pay, then the annual debt service payment would be about 2.2 million.
For how many years, Jen?
For a bond issue for transportation, that would be 20 years.
Yeah.
Okay, because I just said it was 10 years unless we set the debt service up that we could do it on.
Correct. The 10 years is the term of the TBD district. So that's kind of a different term than a bond issue. So if you don't establish that the TBD funds would be used for debt service obligation, your Transportation Benefit District would only last 10 years and you'd have to go back to the voters then. In this case, if you define that you're going to pay for debt service, you wouldn't have to go back to the voters then because you've stated that this is going to be for debt service and that essentially is longer terms.
And we would then say it's a 20-year, the voters would know it'd be a 20-year tax, not a 10-year tax, and it's planned out for a long term.
And it's always, it's always good to identify what you're doing it for and how long you're doing it for, for sure.
Because you'd still set a time limit, you could do 15-year, 20-year, whatever you wanted to do and just say that's what it's planned for and then you just continue it. So it's just longer. Great, thank you. That's how you, you're looking at a 20-year general when you say 35 million?
I'm looking at a 20-year debt amortization schedule on a transportation bond.
Yeah, so, you know, we'd be collecting, you know, 44 million, but there'd be interest payments, about $7 million in there or so, and $35 million worth of projects, basically.
Yes.
Most good.
Yeah. Thank you.
And the final question then was how stable of a source is sales tax in comparison to other sources? Everyone knows that sales tax is really a volatile resource and it is subject to economic ups and downs. And so it would not necessarily be wise to, you know, issue the most amount of bonds for an estimated amount of tax. I mean, we certainly have history of sales tax coming in, but again, we also know that when the economy has changed for the downward, that we do not have as much resources. And so if we were to issue too much debt, obligate ourselves, then that would mean we'd have to find another source other than the TBD sales tax sources in order to pay our debt service. It is certainly, it's certainly more prudent to issue debt according to a little budget, CIP, you've got a schedule, because then that gives you time to develop other sources such as grants, others who are going to contribute to a potential project. And so that just helps to kind of smooth out the sales tax as a funding source.
So if we did have a TBD, it's highly unlikely our first ask would be to go out for 35 million. I'm thinking more along the lines, what council member Ramos said is that if we go back to the public, we should go with a small project that we can get done and show success. But how, once you are locked in and the TBD funding source is the sales tax and you have these issues with increases or decreases, how do you smooth that all out?
You'd have to smooth it out by, you know, that's your level of risk.
Yeah.
Where if you, if you know the estimated annual debt obligation that you're going to enter into and that you would, you know, try to align that with a conservative amount of sales tax that we estimate, but you'd also have to be prepared to use another source to pay the debt obligation.
Right.
So that, that's the end of the questions. Are there any other follow-up questions?
And- Jen, is it possible to put up the agenda bill? I guess Sheldon's in charge.
Yeah, I see. It's her own body.
And the thing I was looking for, Sheldon, where it talks about other cities that are currently doing it, TBD?
That's not, that's a different place.
I think it's near the end-ish.
Right after the presentation, the PowerPoint.
Page two is the King County jurisdictions and then after that, there are outside of King County jurisdictions.
Page 31, if you need a number.
Just do a Ctrl+F on full list. Just search the page.
My questions are kind of general. So I liked seeing what everybody else was doing and when they established it and what type of funding source they picked. I didn't understand the yes and no's on powers assumed. So can you put a TBD in place and not execute? Is that what powers assumed means?
Powers assumed is, and we're back to the bond council's presentation about what that means, is that when this, TBD is a relatively new tool for funding. And so when the, when state law authorized this as a means for funding transportation, and I'll try not to go too far into the weeds, what happened is, is that TBDs were authorized as, you know, they're separate taxing jurisdictions. So essentially, it created a whole nother board and some communities had a separate TBD board and it may or may not have been a city council. It could have been a whole separate board. What that powers assumed means is that through legislation in 2015, because there were challenges with administering TBDs, what that means is that it allowed for the city then to assume the powers of the separate taxing jurisdiction and not have all of the kind of administrative challenges that two separate-
Boards would have.
Boards, what was being created. So for example, there was, the TBD board was required to approve warrants, so a claims list for TBD projects. Well, one of the challenges that came up in that kind of structure- Well, one of the challenges that came up in that kind of structure was that TBD is only a partial funding source off of typically a major, large capital project, and it wasn't necessarily the, a project that the TBD board had complete oversight over. It was a partial funding source, and so that's essentially where the problems were. So a TBD board really couldn't approve a partial contractor pay app that was associated with only the TBD portion, and so that's where the challenge is. And some legal action, actually, there were some communities where legal was, they were basically appealing the, some rulings that the state auditors were making with regards to reporting and administrative. So, that's essentially, what that means is that the legislature allowed for cities to assume the powers of that separate taxing jurisdiction, and that's what that yes/no means, is that those communities, those councils decided to assume the powers and remove a lot of administrative headache.
Okay, and as many did not assume as did, why would that be?
You know, it really, it really depends. There could be, because it is a separate board, it's not the exact makeup of a city council, and that's why they didn't assume the powers, is because they still want a separate board to review the expenditures. Those communities likely have extra administrative work in order to craft a list of claims that suffices for audit purposes.
They're fine with it.
That could be one reason.
Okay. So then, more generally, what do we risk by not doing a TBD now? And then a second question is, are we better served doing a TBD that is just the geographic limits of Issaquah or partnering in a different partnership? What are the pros and cons of that?
Well, the pros and cons with us only doing City of Issaquah as the corporate.
The boundaries.
Boundaries of the district is that it's all your decision-making. So there's no other entity that would make a decision on what projects, where you spend the money, terms, things of that nature. So, that could be seen as a positive. If you go larger with a region, then you have, you have others involved in the decision-making process. It's not only just, it would not only be City of Issaquah projects, it would be regional. So there are those challenges with agreeing to what the projects are in the TBD, the administration of it, so it gets more administratively complicated, certainly, with an expanded region.
And if we were to not do it now as a city, are we at risk of being included in a larger regional TBD that maybe we didn't want to be included in?
I think that that, I mean, we wouldn't, that would be the city council's decision on whether or not you'd want to be, if you were approached by a larger group, you would have to determine whether or not you wanted to be part of that.
It doesn't go right to the residents for a vote.
No, I mean, you're going to, you're going to have all the partners involved have to, would have to have a say. They'd have to authorize to say, yes, we're going to go to our voters to be part of a larger regional TBD, and so it wouldn't just happen to us. You would have that control over whether or not you participate.
So from a timely point of view, or a threat or a perceived downside, there really isn't any. We could do it now, we could do it later. There isn't.
That would be, yeah, the city's council's discretion to ask the voters to implement a TBD.
Okay. Thanks, that's helpful.
Paul?
It seems to me that the shape of it should be defined on what you want to accomplish. For example, so if it would be us and the county and/or some other jurisdictions, it would be because there's some common transportation issue or project that we all agree together that is a priority and we would want to do versus, and if we think everything is inside our own borders and that's where we should focus, then we don't need to ask anybody else. We would just do it on our own. So it'd be based upon what kind of projects we feel are most needed.
Okay. So is that good for questions and Jen's presentation? In which case then, I say we move into discussion of people's thoughts. I want to ask one overarching question before we do that, and that is, are any of the things we don't have answers to going to hold us up on the discussion? Or can you feel you can move forward and make a decision without any of these answers? Or not? You okay?
Yep.
Paul?
Well, I do have a question for you, Bill. So this, so on the agenda, this is labeled as just for information and discussion, so you want to take some action.
Well, that's a mistake. It should have been action.
Because it does say in the agenda bill, the date is there, returning like on December 4th.
Yeah, that was, just to give us plenty of time in case there was other things we had to do. I apologize, we didn't get that one right there. The intended was action today to pass this on to city council with our recommendation or whatever, whatever we want to say, I want to send this up. I think, we have plenty of time today to discuss what we need to, that we don't have to come back at another time and continue our discussion, unless there was a big question that said I couldn't, you know, somebody said I can't decide on this without the answer to this question. So that's why I wanted to ask on those things. There were some that had, you know, some decent implications, so I'm okay with them. You just nodded you're okay. Is there any questions that would hold you up from moving forward?
Well, I came into this with the thinking that, that this was going to stay in discussion or stay in committee for a while because of the information that's in the bill.
Yes.
And it occurred to me that maybe that was designed intentionally to get us through a budget season, because we are going to see a forecasted 2017, or 2018, excuse me, by December 4th, right? We're going to have, we're going to have forecasted revenues, we're going to have, we're going to have completed the CIP, which we haven't done yet. And all of those made sense to me, that we have, you know, in terms of a sequence of things, the CIP, the operational budget, and then we'll have a better sense of the entire council as well. Another reason I like the longer timeframe is, I think everybody in the state, especially our school district, everybody's still really trying to figure out what the impact of what just hap, what Olympia did in terms of school funding and related, and that's going to have a big, very big impact on property taxes and overall tax burden, especially it looks that way in the Issaquah School District. And I think we get a little bit more clarity with more time as well. So, no guarantee we're going to know more by December 14th. I realize that those are, those are different things, but in the end, it's all us, it's all our taxpayers, it's us. And so I thought that, for those reasons, it's, that the waiting to December made sense to me.
And I'll apologize for that. When we talked about it at the last meeting, and we got to the point where we had some of these questions, and it sounded like we needed to digest it a little more, so I held it over and said, let's do it one more time, and talking to Emily, she said, well, let's just extend it in case we get hung up and not, not a problem. We weren't thinking about it being that long in case we needed it. And then when we had only one item here, it was, that was my push then to say, well, let's, let's get the discussion done that we need to do. If we don't feel we can do that tonight, then that's another issue, and I heard your points, and I think you have some valid points. So with that in mind, how about we enter the discussion on it, see how far we can get to, and if that would hold us up, then we could look at that. If not, see if we could get to something we could forward to council or not. Bob?
Excuse me. So just for a piece of information that Bill and Paul don't know, council leadership this week, council leadership asked us to introduce the agenda bill for Providence Point. And so that will either be at the September 5th or the second meeting in September, and that will lay out a variety of funding options, one of those being the TBD. So, the council had asked that we come back with an agenda bill to talk about that specific item. So, I don't know if you'll want to, I don't know if you want to combine those or have, you know, one influence the other or not, but if the, so just adding it for information since I don't think all of you knew.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. And let me add one more thing now, that I'm looking at this, what we're supposed to talk about here now is strictly just, should we form a TBD? Not what we're going to do with it, not the sales tax, not the vehicle tab tax, it's not the rate, it's not how much, it's not the projects. There's no information here, just to say, should we form a TBD? And then we can sit on it and do nothing, right? We have the ability to do something, or we can implement it, okay? What we're going to do with that, I don't know. We don't know. So that's a question for me before us, okay? And because that's what the agenda bill says, so it's not, no details are in it, it's kind of like passing kind of a general thing that says, do we do this? Now, we're supposed to get some in-depth stuff. Thinking about those things, like Bob mentioned, I'm, we're all very aware of the various projects we have on the list, and some of them are higher on the list than others, right? So, we'll have those in the back of our mind, you know, which order we decide to tackle those, one way or another, through whatever funding source, that's always in the back of our mind. We had that list before the voters last year, so it's nothing new. And there's maybe some other changes and different looks at that, but at least there's, some of those are well-known. So, that's the question in my mind before us. If that makes sense.
Sure. Could we get him to pull up the resolution too, just to take a look at it? I think I remember what you're saying right now, I just don't have the document open.
You want the agenda bill?
Oh, he can put it up there. Yeah, what you said makes sense to me.
That's what it was.
So I just want to see what the resolution is.
Yeah. That's what you were after? When you said resolution, I wasn't sure because we don't have, yeah, we don't have a resolution. I assumed you meant that. And it's saying to return it to council with our thoughts and deep dive.
Can you go up a couple lines?
Right. A lot of stuff, yeah. Point here is to go back to council saying, hey, we should, we shouldn't, or it's a two-to-one vote, whatever we want to tell them, and the why. So they're going to get the committee recommendation. The council has to do this, it's, you know, and that's, I view this as us sending to the council our wise, in-depth knowledge and wisdom on this issue. So, you know, if you can, if that's working or not working, tell me. I understand what you said, Paul, and I think you have some legitimate points there from that point of view. I'm not sure if time will get us much clarity on some of those issues, but there's, I mean, I understand, it was not shown as an action item, so that was a mistake. I don't know if that technically inhibits us from taking action? It doesn't? All right. So, so you were, you came prepared for something else because of the way it was presented, and apologize for that. So, so I'm going to ask for where you would like to go with this, with, I think you know what I'm asking. What do you think? You want to just start discussion and get to know what we think about it?
Yeah, are you, are you asking me that question?
Yeah.
Because, you know, I already said, I do think we should go through the CIP, I'd like to see the operational budget. I actually, my preference would be that the council takes a little bit more formal action on projects and prioritize them, and by these, by the steps that are out in front of us, and then we know that this is a tool, then we can decide, you know, this is the tool we want to go towards to use to do that, based upon a comprehensive understanding of finances. Now, and I think we're, the stage is well-set, and now we're, I feel, you know, very well-informed, just a few outstanding questions, but very well-informed about what this option would mean. But I think getting through the capital plan and getting through the operational budget, and then, and then seeing, because I know, and I learned a little bit more, you know, we are going to see a bill regarding the intersection at Providence Point. I know what the TIP, I know what the, I know what the number is there, and so, you know, I'd like to see, it just seems, I think we're being a little bit presumptive to put this in place, even just as a shell with no intention yet. I'd like to see it be really driven by that information from those other sources.
Okay, thank you. Mary Lou, what do you think?
I think I got a lot of my questions and concerns addressed from Jen's presentation and her follow-up today. I actually think this is a tool we should have in the toolkit, not sure how we would use it, but I would be comfortable saying that it could go back to the council at this point. The things that I like about this is that it looks like we can have the voters have a say in the project and how it's funded, and I kind of like that. I think, going back to the bond and the fact that it did not pass, I think coming forward with something smaller and getting the resident's voice in it again is good. This is a tool that we could use. Whether or not we get the, I think we should be directing the administration to schedule a public hearing and prepare an ordinance for consideration. Not sure that we have to put a date on that right now. I do agree with Councilmember Winterstein that this may travel in tandem with the budget. But I think, as far as I've heard everything that Jen explained, I think I have a very good understanding of how it works. I think it could be a good tool. Not sure if it's when we're going to use this year or not, but I'm fine with moving it forward to the council.
Okay.
Seeing what an ordinance looks like.
And, okay, I'll weigh in a little bit then. So, I guess I have some concerns with this as a shell going forward. I really do say, okay, it's kind of like, you know, you can read the bill next week, vote on it today a little bit. And I'm not sure this is, this is a tool I want to start funding some of these projects. I think there's still some other options that I would like to pursue. So, you know, I bluntly, I was ready to come here and say, well, if we need to send it to council, I was going to say I'd recommend against it. And I think you're recommending postponing it, you're recommending, okay with it.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. So, I'm trying to think of the best way to deal with this, because we technically have till December, it can sit here for a couple more months, and we could bring it back up in November, when we have, we still won't have all our budget information in CIP set by middle of November. We'll be closer, I, we'll be closer, but the budget won't be done in November. But the CIP should be pretty set, but which ones are fitting in the budget where, we wouldn't know. We, I have a feeling the state issues, we probably won't be settled by then either, but you never know on that. But I guess, for me, I'm looking, you mentioned about the state issue of that funding, where that's going to come from. I just really feel we're asking a lot of the taxpayers in this last year or so. They just passed ST 3, which people are just starting to realize the consequence on that with stuff and all the, you know, with tabs and sales tax and everything else. We just passed a really big school bond, you know, we just had stuff in there, and Olympia you just mentioned, and in general, property taxes doing nothing because of property values skyrocketing, people's property taxes are skyrocketing even though they're just sitting in their home and doing nothing. I say mine personally are going up $200 a month next year. That's 200 a month just in the taxes, and so I'm, and I've done nothing. So, we're asking a lot, so I'm very cautious on asking a taxpayer for more money right now and in this way. So, that's my kind of view on things right now, unless we have a better, you know, a real, a clear understanding, I think, some of the ways you were mentioning, Paul, saying, okay, we're going to look more on an amount, more on a project level, get a little more specificity to it than a shell that we're talking about now. So, with that all stated, anybody else have, round two. Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I wanted to be clear that this is a tool that's available to us, absolutely. It's available to us, absolutely. And, and, and the, the idea of moving forward to establish it, I think, I think having a very well-established need, actually legislative action completed, especially on a CIP, more than anything else of all of those, and then having some more detailed information, again, from the operational budget, because we'll have a better forecast for next year. It's a good tool, but before we even, I think to take that step is now, without, having identified what we would do with it, I don't see any harm in waiting. But that's not a judgment on the tools capabilities, it's more of, I just think that procedurally, kind of sequentially, I want to go through those steps first.
Mary Lou?
I have a suggestion. I have a suggestion, and that is to maybe direct the administration, while they're working up an agenda bill on Providence Point, to make an assumption that the Transportation Benefit District is one of the tools, so that when they're putting together options of, it could be funded this way, or it could be funded this way with three different things, or this way with part TBD, or this way with all TBD, we could see what it means, and we could see the impact of the taxpayer. You'd have a project, you'd have an impact. Because it was something we requested last year, was to get proposals, I would ask if you would be interested in allowing them to use TBD in their proposals, either as partial or full funding for the project. Then you'd see the impact on taxpayer for Providence Point.
So let me address that. So, because I'm, what I'm, my thoughts here, having heard everybody now, I'm thinking that, the, I would suggest we plan, we sit on this until November, and then we'll move at that point, okay? If we're going to do that, then I'm not comfortable directing someone to use a tool. We're saying, we're not ready to, you know, move forward, which we could if we wanted to, but we're not ready to, to direct someone to use that tool when we're not taking it out of the toolbox ourselves. That doesn't, that doesn't fit for me. They can assume anything they want. They can, they can, you know, they can put all sorts of things in there, they can do what they want, but I wouldn't want to direct them to do that.
Okay, so they could do it, we're just not directing them to do it. They could come back with a proposal.
They can do whatever they want. They can come up with a proposal, right? That's, that's your job. Come up with a proposal and give us options, right? So, but I wouldn't want to direct him to do that at this time.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, Paul?
I think I'm agreeing with both of you.
I think we're all agreeing.
Absolutely. Model different ways to fund it. And this agenda bill needs to come forward with at least one, hopefully multiple options on how to fund. And if a TBD is part of one of your models, I mean, that's fine. We know, we know how they work right now. I would say that I'm, I'm not, I'll let you know if you're going to model. I'm not interested in the car tab. I think debt obligation is interesting, because it gives, allows you to collect more. I thank you for the numbers you gave there. I asked that question, because it kind of showed us what the upper limit was in, in one year. Now we know anything that fits within there, and it can be a quarter of that, a tenth of that, or anywhere up to there. And, 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 and generally, you know, I have a hard time with sales tax because it's disproportionate, but it is the one funding source up there that includes really everybody who does commerce inside as a quash, so it does spread it out a little bit more. So I haven't decided, yeah, where I stand on that right now, but if, if you're going to model something, I would ask that you model that.
All right. And I'll just read it a little further, because the, the, these regressive taxes that we have options of using are bad, and, and the car tabs are even worse, because it's the same for $100,000 Tesla or $2,500 junker. That doesn't, it does, just doesn't equate for me, and that's one of the problems I'm having with, with the tax structure we're having in general. So, um, I, I second that, that thought on that. But, but yeah, so at this point, I think we're in agreement, we're, this committee's going to sit on this a little bit. Administration's going to do what they're going to do, and, and always present us with the best and most varied options they can do, right?
Regarding the Providence Point.
Regarding, regarding whatever they want to do. I'm not giving them direction at all. They're doing what they're doing. I wouldn't have known anything about it if Bob hadn't brought it up, right? So, um, so I think we're going to let them do that. We will definitely have this on the agenda in November, maybe October if we, if we have a need to bring, soon, we can bring it back anytime we want, but October, November probably, not September next month. We don't have anything, more news by then, but October, November, we're going to have to visit this somewhere or another and decide how to pass it back to council, because that's our charge.
Mr. Chair, I would like it to be a two to one to keep it in committee, because I am ready to move it out. So if we're going to talk about that, I'd just like to say, two to one, it can come back in October, but I, I actually think we're ready to move it forward to them now, in terms of their task to us, which was, do you understand this? And I think I do, so that would be my ask. It's not unanimous that it's staying in committee. I actually think it should move out. But it won't, because it's two to one.
Yeah, I, whatever, staying in committee is not necessarily a vote for me. That's, that's what we're doing. So we're just studying a little further. We need more information, so that's not a vote in my mind. So, we just need more information.
The stuff that Jen has, Ted, bring back.
She's got a few, she's got a few questions right back. Paul and I, you know, have a few more questions as well, so we're not prepared to, to move forward. So I think that's not a, it didn't come to a vote, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Well, I disagree, but, but the chair.
All right. Well, thank you. All right. So, Jen, I think you have all our questions, that you'll get a few more answers to in general, on what tolling and capacity for transit outside the district and a few things of that nature, in the meantime, right? All right. Okay, great. So, then we're going to move on to the second and final agenda item, which is project updates. Sheldon, you have lots to tell us about. It is, we are in the middle of, of the construction season.
Right, and I guess I'll start off by saying, you know, we provided the written updates and so forth, and so, in your guys' review of that, if you have any specific questions on that, I'd be happy to respond to them. And then I have a few, you know, up-to-date, last-minute updates, like some of the stuff I even got today, that you would be interested in.
Little question on second.
On second and Sunset.
Yeah, on the light, I think.
Yeah, the signal.
Yeah, I don't think there was something, I can't remember what the chart said, but I think it didn't say a completion date for the signal. I think that was my question.
No, I didn't have a completion date from Department of Development Services on that. As everybody's aware, they're under construction, and it's looking like it's getting pretty close. As we drive through there, it's just like, okay, the heads are up, looks like they got some tweaking to do here and there, but it's getting close.
Just wondering if it's first day of school or not.
Don't have an answer for you.
Okay. That was the only question I had.
Yep.
Okay. Dangerous to guess. I'm not, I'm not going to commit there. All right. Okay.
Sorry.
Second, any other particular questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Any new information about the Washdott Fish Passage?
Absolutely. That was some of the information I got this morning, actually.
Oh, good.
So let me pull that up. I was in communication with the construction inspector for Washdott yesterday and today, kind of asking for some more information on what's happening with that project, and he provided me an updated schedule, which I can provide in writing to the committee afterwards, because I didn't have time to send it out today.
Okay.
But essentially, he got very specific on dates and what's going to happen. So Friday, August 18th, they're expecting to open up the east side of East Lake Somamish Parkway in the sidewalk area for use, but it will be a compact gravel surface at that time. On August 28th, they expect to have the east side of East Lake Somamish Parkway sidewalk paved with asphalt for use. So basically, Friday to, and a week later, or whatever, they'll pave that path on the east side of East Lake Somamish Parkway. On August 23rd, they expect to open the west side, which is the side next to the wetlands, on August 23rd, paved with concrete. On August 31st, they expect to be grinding the asphalt on East Lake Somamish Parkway. And on September 5th, they've scheduled permanent repaving of East Lake Somamish Parkway through the project zone.
What date was that?
September 5th.
September 5th.
There was a big council meeting that night.
Final paving.
And I believe what they're, well, not quite, because they'll have pavement markings and things like that to do afterwards, and they have to wait about 30 days for the asphalt to cure enough so that the pavement markings will stick. That's the update on that one. Glad you asked, because I literally got that this morning.
So, just to be, so the west side sidewalk, the sidewalk on the west side, so that, that'll be open on the 23rd? So, so that...
The west side sidewalk will be open, and it will also be paved with concrete. In other words, it'll be a concrete sidewalk, just like they...
Paved with concrete.
Yeah, in other words, I'm just reading exactly what they gave you, but basically, you'll have a concrete sidewalk on the west side, I'm going to say, end of day on August 23rd.
All right. So the, so the detour of our detour that people have to use today will go away.
Will go away on August 23rd.
The original detour that we have for the 60 seconds.
Right, it brings us back to the original detour we had for our project.
All right, thank you.
On the 23rd.
Good. Other questions? You had, you had one, I was going to see. Oh, what we just started, or this week was anti-aircraft just opened up, right?
That's correct. They've done the initial traffic diversion and things like that, and they're digging away and getting the culvert installed.
And so that really just started?
It just started, but it's going well so far.
Okay. You had one other one you wanted to ask about?
Just curious on the development project.
Which one?
Gateway, and there's a roundabout, and I don't have the list in front of me, I'm not sure if that one made it on there, but there's a community meeting or a homeowners' meeting coming up on that one? But it's close to being done there for...
There is a homeowners' meeting with Somamish Point condominiums and Spyglass condominiums to further the conversation related to the roundabout that Gateway's going to build.
And that was on there, wasn't it?
Specifically, it's associated with their properties.
And it says that, and, and then it says roundabout, late fall, winter.
Yeah, I shifted that, because obviously it's not going to be summer.
Okay.
And then, as a caveat to that even, opening it up in the wintertime, I'm not sure that's such a good idea, but I don't know what the weather windows are going to look like either, so.
Okay. The other one, I wanted you to elaborate on, actually, oh, two of them, Talis and the I-90 shoulder use study.
Okay. The Talis Shangri-La Drive, work is underway. They've been installing the piling for the buried wall. They have been having some challenges there because of utility conflicts. They've had to shift some of the piles around and everything, but everything's technically sound. And they've been plagued with equipment difficulties. They've had three pieces of drilling equipment out there, and even one that was brand-new, that they brought out, never been used, broke down on the day they brought it out. So we've been plagued with a number of things, utility conflicts, equipment failures and things like that, but it's progressing, and, you know, the contractor's doing his best that he can to get it done. The I-90 peak shoulder use?
Yes.
That's a really good one to bring up. Just a minute, let me go to my notes here. I-90 peak shoulder use, the, I've had conversations with Washdott a couple weeks ago now, where they have told me that Washdott believes that it's completely feasible to provide for the pinch point expansion area. I was contacted last week that they're working to change the scope of work for their consultant to include more detailed design work associated with that. So that's going very well. They haven't yet contacted FHWA, but they feel like we'll be able to work through those issues with, with Washdott and the city working together to get FHWA's approval on the, allowing the city to expand into their right-of-way. They are planning at least one more additional stakeholder group meeting in the next month or two, which will, will get more detail on sound walls and things like that. But the cost has been going up on the project as a result of sound walls that they didn't realize they were going to have to build, because the analysis came back and the sound walls got longer, and some of them got taller.
They should just build us a lid.
Not in this project's scope, but I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying. We'll compete with Mesut Island, the most expensive mile in the I-90, right? So, that project is going well. They do plan on still having the design bill contract out and under construction next year.
Sheldon, when you say stakeholders, it's more of the, at the staff-level stakeholders, it's not another community meeting, is it?
No, it's not a community-type meeting. It's agency meetings, Washington State Patrol, even City of Somamish is at the table when they want to. They cast a very wide net of municipal and other agencies to the table, so that they make sure that the stakeholders are there, and we've been there, plucking on behalf, really, of our citizens, as well as the administration and council, to say, hey, pinch point, pinch point, pinch point, pinch point, you know? And then sound wall, sound wall, sound wall. So we're representing the community, I think, very well.
And the last thing, just mentioned that it looks like a bunch of our smaller projects, our complete streets kinds of things are going to be starting up here any, any day now.
Yes.
So just kind of word to folks to watch for, there'll be a bunch of little construction projects popping up on the streets here and there, and to watch out for them.
That is correct, yep.
Yeah, from Front Street, Sunset, Second, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep.
Okay?
And then, other questions?
I think, you got one more?
Go ahead.
What's the timing of the Iskua Hobart study?
I, I was having conversations with staff on that, and we're looking to brief this committee on that study next month.
Awesome.
And so, that's where we are with that. They should be able to have information regarding the data they collected, criteria used, and possibly some ideas of projects that are going to be put in the report.
All right, thank you.
Excellent. Any last questions? Are we ready to wrap this up?
Ready to wrap that.
Ready to wrap it up? People are leaving.
I've got a couple items for a quick, I'm sorry, that we're not on the update sheet. End of July, we received notice from PSRC of a Transportation Alternative Program grant application due dates, and while the pot of money is not really large, they do allow up to a $2 million application for a grant. And staff has met a couple times on that, but we need to get council approval if you guys want us to apply for the grant, or allow us to. The project we're looking at is Newport 54th to 900, and this is pedestrian-related and so forth, but there's a significant pedestrian and non-motorized component in that project. So we're hoping to put an agenda bill in front of council, one-touch type of thing, on September 18th, because the grants are due September 20th.
Construction or planning?
Design work, which includes all the community outreach and things like that that we're doing. It's just moving along the process and progress of which we're, which we are now, but it's an opportunity to bring in some additional money to the project.
Awesome.
And so, you know, I've given the administration a heads-up on it, and hopefully they'll also be talking with leadership about it. But I know council's sensitive to the one-touch thing, but I wanted to give you guys a heads-up, because just the timing of everything didn't allow us to get an agenda bill in for the first meeting in August. You guys didn't meet the second meeting in August, and so it's just kind of a...
We need a break.
Yeah, everybody needs a break. So, just wanted to bring that up, because I think that's good.
And we are sensitive to one-touch, but when, when it comes to getting money from other people, we will, we'll usually be a little more easygoing on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd also say that Newport Way between 900 and Southeast 54th has taken on a new life of its own the last few years, and anything we can do to move that along would be awesome.
Yeah.
For sure. You have another?
Just a heads-up sort of thing. The committee has, had conversations about complete streets and the use of that money, if you recall the conversation between the pavement overlay program and ADA ramps and things like that. Right now, the ADA, the number of ADA ramps from this year to next year, this program, has doubled, because, just because of the streets that are getting overlaid, and so the cost has gone up commensurate with that. So the ADA ramp replacement is going to use pretty much all... So the ADA ramp replacement is going to use pretty much all the money for next year on the complete streets. We'll have a little bit to have in there for some traffic calming, some updates of the pedestrian crossing guidelines, and also to update the traffic calming program that we have, but then also have some money in there to actually respond to traffic calming issues and things like that. So, but very little in those three items.
Yeah. Go ahead.
So I have an ask on that, and it is that I've been asked by some members of the community, what prioritizes ADA ramp installation? And so every time we go out and overlay, we ought to do it, because that makes sense, but are there some priority ADA installations that we should be doing even though certain intersections or streets are not getting overlaid? And if so, I'd like to know, because I would consider going to council and asking to fund those as well as the ones that are tied to the overlay program.
Okay, their prioritization of the ADA, we have such a large list there, you could start at one end and just work to the other, and there's no specific prioritization in them?
I'm just thinking from the point of view of, we do know where in town we have residents currently in wheelchairs or with mobility issues, and so if we're missing, you know, if there's some intersection on Front or Sunset that's not getting an overlay, but we know it gets used, then I'd like to know what that list is, and if it's five or six more, what would that cost?
Okay.
So location is an issue to me.
I'd have to ask around, see if we have that information, because there has been time to time where we've received complaints from people that are handicapped, and we typically respond pretty quickly to those and just get them done. We figure a way to work them in.
That would be a great linkage for me. That would be great.
But we don't know where the disabled people live necessarily unless they tell us.
Exactly.
And we don't know all the places that they cross and things like that.
Except the school district does, because they send the special bus out with the altered ramp to allow students to access, so the school district does have, actually, by.
But there's more than just students, though.
Oh, absolutely. I'm just saying, there is some information out there.
Yeah, so we can poke around a little bit and see if there's others in there.
Totally appreciate it.
Another thing I thought, just a reminder, is the decision we made is that to keep the overlayment amount strictly for overlayment, unless you're kind of hinting at, and any requirements for ADA or other stuff is going to come from other money, so we're not taking away from overlayment to pay for ADA ramps.
Correct.
Just reminding us that that's what we decided last year.
Good clarification.
Okay. All right. Zach? Wrap us up? Are we good? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.